One, time is 5:35 PM. It is Tuesday, September 29th. I'm going to call a special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw? Parsley.
All right, five members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item, to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have, it looks like two registered to speak. First up, Mr. Robert Price.
Good evening. My name's Robert Price. I'm here representing the VFW. The first thing we want to get these out to y'all, this is for the 9/11 ceremony that we're going to have at Hero's Memorial Park on 9/11. To give you some information on it. The second thing is, we have heard some grumbling from people in the city and different sources that they want to cut off the water at the Hero's Memorial Park. And I understand why people look at it like, yeah, we need to cut it off. But it means a lot to the veterans. It means a lot to all the people that have been there. And you don't realize how good a monument you have out there, because I've been to Washington DC. You have one that's on a par with them, because you represent everybody, not just one service at a time. And the sound of water is kind of soothing to a lot of people. I know it is to me. And when the demons get mad, I like to go out there. And I have been, I have fulfilled all of those jobs. I have been hazmat. I have been a firefighter industrial. I have been an EMT. I've worked in a funeral home. I've worked security at Walt Disney World, and I'm a veteran. So I've pretty much done all of those jobs, and I kind of understand how it can make us feel and the veterans feel, because different people have different feelings. But I know I've, on patrol as a COP, I've been out there at night, and I've seen people out there wandering around, sitting in the little oakloes that we have, and kind of cooling out or chilling out. So we're asking, I don't know if it's been up or if it's been brought to y'all, but we're asking not to shut the water off there, because it means a lot to us, especially when we have our ceremonies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. All right, next up is Sean Moore.
Hi, Mayor, Council. I'm a, I'm a veteran, as you can see, a member of the Post. I'm not here representing necessarily the Post's opinions, but my own. I would agree with Robert on almost everything he said. There's questions that should be asked and answered before we shut water off at the park. I'm not against it if that's what has to be done, and we trust that you guys make the right decision on that. But those questions, you know, those questions are about the pumps, the lining, all that stuff. Those have to be answered before you make a decision to shut the water off. Is it going to cost the city more to fill that tank back up than it's worth? Is it going to cost the city money to move aquatic life that lives there? There are fish in the pond. They may not have started out there, but they're there now. There are also turtles in the pond, that kind of stuff. So just, you know, give that a lot of thought, ask those questions, please, before you decide to shut that water off. That's, that's all I wanted to bring up.
All right. Thank you, Sean. That is all of the comments that I have, forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Mayor, Council, Steve Cook. I've heard a lot of this, you know, on this through the months, and it is beautiful. I mean, we had our state commander down here. It's going to make the state VFW magazine probably national. But my concern in hearing some of this is maybe more effectively running. I mean, no one expects a drought like what we got at this time with this new memorial. So it is a learning curve, but my concern is, I, I see the waterfront, the fire hydrant at the back, and it was running pretty nonstop when I was out there. And today it's not. I didn't see it, but I know fire hydrant is drinking water. So my concern is, if drinking water is going into the fountain, how do we change that? How do we get potable water and not use our, where I don't know where it comes from. I'm not that educated. But there is a lot of, it's a new memorial, and it seems like we need a better after-action report, you know, of all aspects of this. No one wants to see it turned down. I mean, we had our officers here, and it was, they fell in love with it. And so do we, all the veterans enjoy it, and every, every first responder. But there's just too many open questions, you know? And I would like to see some of that answered before, and for the city, and I know y'all do, take a broad aspect and look at all the problems and see how we can work better in the future on this. It's just been a nightmare hearing everything, you know, I've heard. And my biggest concern is the drinking water. If we're putting drinking water in there, yeah, I don't think that's quite right. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up, agenda item number one, receive a report, hold discussion, provide direction regarding city's water usage and watering restrictions. Mr. Langley.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you know, we've been monitoring the drought in the area as well as our water usage and some of the restrictions that we have in place on water usage. Unfortunately, we're going to be needing to make some recommendations to increase those restrictions due to our permits that we have for water. So I'm going to ask Amber to go through a brief presentation with you to outline some of the usage that we've had and our recommendations, and then get any feedback or questions that you have. Amber?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an update on the city's water usage and restrictions, where we're at. So currently, the city of Kyle is in stage two amended watering restrictions. We've been at this point for quite a few months because of the drought status. We get our water from three different supplies. The first is the Edwards Aquifer Authority. We call it the EAA. They are currently in a conservation of stage four. Barton Springs Edwards Aquifer Conservation District is our second supplier. They are currently in stage three. And then our third and our greatest water supplier is the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority, GBRA. They're currently in a voluntary 5% reduction. So according to the NOAA precipitation data, Kyle has received only 10 to 25% of the normal precipitation for our area as of July 2023. And Jerry's got some detailed slides about the current drought status and, and looks to what historically we've seen over the past year. It's pretty shocking. So we can call him up later, and we can go through those slides as well. Water usage table, we actively monitor the situation on a daily basis. Harper, Tim, their team, they're, they're looking at the infrastructure, the equipment every day. I'm working with them every day. We're, we're examining what we've used against what we have available to us under our permits. And today, as of August 28th, we have allocated to us for the entire year under the EAA permit 88.9 million gallons, and we've used 89% of that supply. The Barton Springs permit is a little bit different. We have to go month to month. So while you can see, we have 161.7 million gallons allocated to us for the entire year, we have to look at what they have allocated to us for the month of August, and that is 19.4 million gallons. And so currently, we are 90% of the way through the month, and we have used 77% of our monthly allocation under that permit. The GBRA, we have 1.5 billion, did I read that right? Billion gallons. It's a big number. And we have used 52% of that water. And y'all might say, why aren't we using more of the GBRA water? Well, our system is built so that we are using as much water as our system can handle through the, of our GBRA permit. So that's, we're pumping as much as we can, but the system has limitations on what we can use on GBRA. And GBRA, just also for your information, GBRA primarily serves the east side of Kyle, east of I-35, and then EAA and Barton Springs serve the west side. Drought stats for other providers, we took a look. At the left is our, our 10 benchmark cities that we compare against for other things that we do in the city. You can see, and then the other side on the right hand is some of those other providers that might use the same water sources or be, you know, using some of the water sources that are feeding our water sources. All of them are in some stage of conservation, some state of outside irrigation restrictions. And the ones with asterisks indicate the ones that are in our basically water service. So we're sharing some of those same water sources. My point to that is just that I think the city of Kyle, and I think that Harper and Tim and their team have done a really good job making sure that citizens in Kyle have had as much water for as long as possible access to that water. And we're, we're probably one of the last communities holding out on upping our restrictions. So the status of the Barton Springs permit is that they could move to stage four in October 1st. And if they move to stage four, that would mean basically their, our allocation from them is cut in half. So for example, we get 19.4 million gallons this month, it would look like 9.9 million gallons. So that's a, that's a pretty big hit to this permit if they would move. They are monitoring daily. They're actually going out there physically because the water levels are so low, they're having to measure the streams daily. And so their trigger point is if they go below the 14 CFS, they would need to go into stage four, or they could make that call at that time. Yes, ma'am?
Just want to make sure I'm being and understanding this right. Note number two, note from the BSEACD, the Barton Springs gauge is reporting discharge below stage four, but they're still in stage three. So technically, they are below the threshold.
That, well, they reported, I think, one or two days below. Yes. But they have, they have the, the, the board of directors gave the authority to the general manager, executive director, whatever that position is, to make the call as to when they go into stage four. And so they felt like the streams were not measuring accurately, so that's why they're out there in the field doing the measuring. And Tim can come up here and explain.
So, Tim Sanford, good evenings for the record. So yes, Barton Springs says experiencing very low flow, our stream flows. And the city of Austin is doing some things environmentally wise to be sure that they're sensitive to the endangered species associated with Barton Springs. And so Barton is working with USGS, and they're manually collecting those stream flow datas once every two weeks. And so Barton is partnering with them to make sure they're giving us accurate information. We did see this report below that threshold of, of stage four. I believe it was last week. I contacted them on the phone and said, hey, what's going on? And they basically told me we're going to manually collect that. And when they did, it, it came up to 17. So that's, I think this is inconsistencies are due to the, the stream flows being as low as they are.
Okay, thank you.
So the status of our EAA permit, the August has been a record-breaking month for usage citywide and has had the most impact on our EAA water. As of August 28th, we've used 25.1 million gallons under that permit. In comparison, last year, we used 7.8 million gallons, and in 2021, we used 13.4 million gallons. So we're at 89% usage of our annual allocation. And then as, in comparison, we're at 67% of the way through the calendar year. And as of June 30th, we were only at 39% of usage, and June's obviously 50% of the way through the calendar year. So we, we thought we were doing great, doing great, doing great. And then August was just a record breaker for heat, temperature, drought, water usage. So to stay within these permit limits, we have to seek additional water and achieve a significant reduction in water usage. So what that means, we, we have to keep our eye on the Barton Springs. If they moved, I mentioned earlier, if they move to stage four, we'll cut our supply in half. We are good for the month of September. We're safe so far. But to stay within our permit limits of EAA, we have to seek additional water and achieve a significant reduction in water usage. The, Tim and I went to the city of San Marcos, and we requested to purchase additional water, and their staff has agreed to present that water sharing agreement to the city council for their consideration on September 19th. So they have the water available compared to what we projected we might need, and they have been gracious enough to bring that to council for us. However, as part of that agreement, we had to, we had to make some changes in our watering schedule and some things that we're going to discuss to match what, at least what San Marcos is doing. And that's, that's what they asked us to do as part of that agreement. So implementation of stage three restrictions with amendments is necessary to meet reduction requirements, stay within permit limits, and support our efforts in securing this additional water from San Marcos. So the next slide will outline what we are proposing. Stage three amended restrictions would uphold stage two restrictions. Washing your cars, trucks, vehicles are prohibited at home or by hand. That uses a lot of water. But commercial car washes are allowed any day and time. They use mostly recycled water and are, are not a big hit to our system. We will have a new bi-weekly irrigation schedule based on system demands, and we'll go through that in detail on the next slide. Irrigation by handheld bucket or hose allowed any day during 7:00 to 10:00 PM. There will be no installation of new landscaping, but people will be able to still get their certificates of occupancy. They'll still be able to sell houses. It'll be just exactly like what we did last year. They'll just come back in and install the landscaping when the temperatures are better and we have more water. People can submit permits for pools, but they, and we will review them and have them ready to be issued. We just won't issue them until we come out of this stage three amended. And then filling existing pools, ponds, fountains are prohibited unless for the health and safety or potential property damage. And this matches a restriction of San Marcos. And then all those are asterisks. They denote what is deviation from our stage three amended, or a stage three drought contingency plan, which is really pretty strict. So this is still allowing some irrigation. It's still allowing building. It's still allowing all the things that we need, but it's, it's, we've got to cut back on some water. The irrigation schedule proposed, what we're noticing is that Wednesday and Thursday right now, we have even and odd addresses, and it's, it's peaking our systems, challenging our system, and we are struggling to recharge the tanks. And so we are proposing spreading that out over the week. And so if you have an address ending in 01, you get to water on Monday and so forth through Friday. There's no watering on Saturdays and Sundays. And every other week, you get to water, but one week is off of watering, if that makes sense. And this matches San Marcos' irrigation schedule. And so how we get there, we make sure our city facilities, our irrigation systems are in compliance with our restrictions. We increase enforcement with patrols and possible citations, and then obviously, a robust public education and information strategy. Any questions?
Do we only be watering twice a month? If we could only water one day a week and every other week?
Yes, that, that is the case. Unfortunately, only council can speak during the meeting, except for the citizen comments period, but there will be an opportunity to, to get any clarification from staff as soon, as soon as this is over.
Can I ask a question she's trying to ask? So how many days a week can a resident water on, during the month? And does this also apply to businesses that are using sprinkler systems?
Correct. It applies to every, every address in the city of Kyle. You would be able to water every other week. So essentially, right now, you're able to water one day a week. You would water one day every other week, depending on your address.
Just to clarify, that's for the automated irrigation system. So by hose, you could order any day between 7:00 and 10:00 by hand.
Correct.
But on the automated irrigation systems that are primarily just watering grass, that's, that's where it's intended to reduce the usage?
Thank you, Amber.
What does the city's plan look like in case San Marcos can't give us water?
I, I don't, I don't foresee them not being able to provide us with water. If, if they don't, that means we would go over our permit, and we could face possible fines.
Because they entered into stage four yesterday, and so that, that caused me some alarm. And so I, I think, I think it's just to be cautionary, some type of plan should be formulated, because that, their meeting's not until September, correct? So we've got, you know, a week, we got two weeks to try to figure something out in the event. And, you know, and I don't want them to feel like, as much as I want the water, and I would appreciate the water as a resident, as a council member, I just want to make sure that in the event that they can't, so they don't take away from their residents, that they're okay saying no as well. And, and in that case, we really need to have a plan B.
Right. And just to speak to that with the EAA, I've been in conversations with them, and I've been getting, I've been getting some information on them on how, how that would look. And going through this last year, basically, if there's no leaseholders that were willing to work with Kyle or have the ability, availability of that water, EA basically puts a pool together at the end of the year for all the permit, permities. And whatever's left over, they divvy that out on whoever overpumped. Beyond what's able to be divvied out, there is a fine base, and I'm trying to develop what that might look like. Just give me some scenarios from this last year to see what that might look like, and I can share that with, with my supervisors, and we could pass that along if that's something that y'all would like to have.
Okay. I want to say thank you to staff, to Tim and to Public Works, to Brian, to Amber for, for bringing this forward. It's never an easy conversation to have, but I'd rather be proactive than, than to be reactive. And so thank you guys for bringing this to council.
I'd like to give some thoughts. I understand about the, the watering of the lawns and so forth, because you also have to look at your individual house itself when it comes to the foundations and so forth like that, right? We're starting to see those cracks. Anybody out there, you're starting to see cracks in your sheet rock? That means that it's getting very, very dry. You have to look at the, also, the dangers of yards being completely dry, because those could start fires quickly, you know, depending on what you've got going on in your house. So there's a lot of factors that we've got to really look at. One thing that I am, maybe not so much concerned about, would like to make sure that we have all our fire hydrants up to par, as far as if there is a critical incident within the city to where we have a fire. Because everywhere here, you just get a little bit of cigarettes, just one little ash, and it could really, really do some major damage. How are we looking on, on our pressure for our water, for our fire hydrants and things like that? Do we have, we've, we've got to look at that as far as the, the, the security of the city when it comes to an emergency like that. But, but I can, I can understand.
Quickly on that, we're not having any problems with pressure in the system. And I, I think we are having some concerns at the peak times. So all those, the concentration of watering on Wednesdays and Thursdays does give our system some, you know, demands that, that we don't think we can keep sustaining going forward. So by spreading the days out, it certainly gives us more capacity in the system. But we haven't had any pressure issues in the system that I'm aware of.
Okay. And if we do decide to where we have to unfortunately raise the restriction, what would be our plan of action when it comes to working with the businesses out there, including restaurants, on how we regulate the water that's being used within the restaurants and so forth?
Well, I, I think the first step would be to roll back the watering, the outdoor irrigation even further. So potentially, no outdoor irrigation would be the next step if we had to go there. That's where we see the primary usage. And I know Tim and, and the Public Works team have a, a lot of numbers. Basically, we saw a, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, about a 60% increase between the winter and the summer in terms of usage of water. So that's not drinking water. That's irrigation. That's happening during these peak summer months. So by getting, the irrigation attacking that is really where we need to do it. Certainly, we don't want any water to be wasted. If it's, you know, someone's giving a glass of water, but they didn't really want one, that's certainly something that's not good. But it's the irrigation that's causing the, the issue.
Okay. So irrigation is, is really the issue when it comes to the businesses, not so much the usages within, within the restaurants as for, because I understand that they need to be able to wash dishes and serve drinks and so forth. That, that's, that's a no-brainer there. But as far as what regulations we could be able to help and partner up with and make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yes, sir. And we were trying to be cognizant of, of businesses specifically, and that's why you saw the, the car washes not being affected with this proposal we're showing you. And just like Mr. Langley had stated, 60% of, of what we're using now is, is going to irrigation, and that's just off a base rate. Same way you would figure out your base wastewater fees for, you know, wintertime months. That's, that's what they're using in the winter. You know, with that, just looking at that now, it's, it's all being wasted. And, and we've made a tremendous effort to try to educate the public, and we understand that this is going to require some education pieces. And so our plan of attack is, hey, the first two, maybe three weeks, we're going to basically be out as much as we possibly can be and be educating people, making them aware of the changes, and not trying to be, you know, slap on the hand, but hey, we're bringing this to your attention. These are our changes. This is why, and, and all those things that come with it.
And my last thing is, if we end up doing that, and we're trying to get the message out to our residents, there's a way to where we could reach out all residents, including in English and in Spanish. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, one more question. So last year, we had the same issues. I mean, I don't think it was as dire, but looking forward, I can't imagine it's going to get any better. I've been doing some extensive research on the weather, and it's unprecedented. And it's going to be, it's going to be cooler now than it will ever be in the future, is what I'm reading. I know. So my question is, what is our plan for next summer and the next summer and the next summer? How can we make sure that we don't have to consistently keep borrowing and that we're not overdoing it for ourselves as a city?
Well, yes, when the Arwa water comes on, that's projected to come on in the first quarter of 2025, we'll, we'll see a significant help. And then phase two comes on in 2027. And after that, our, our water needs should be fulfilled.
Well, that, see, that's a good point. So if we didn't add any more homes or any more businesses, or if we, if we just stayed status quo, but I know we're getting the Rastagar development, we're getting a ton of other development that's going to bring in a lot of homes. Is the city accounting for that in the future use as well?
Yes, we are. Yes. And if development is bringing on anything that impacts our water system, they're required to do upgrades. Like I said before, the east side doesn't have as many challenges as the west side. So development like Rastagar that's on the east side, it's, you know, served by that GBRA water. Arwa will hit the east side first. So we'll have that water as well. I wouldn't, so kind of to our point, you know, the weather really is what is triggering, you know, these cutbacks in water. And if our permit holders weren't in some stage of conservation, which means when they're in a stage of conservation, they're telling the city of Kyle, you, they're reducing our allocation. So if they were in no conservation, we would have a lot more water. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be here tonight. But because they're also experiencing the drought, have, you know, they have to cut back, they cut back on us, then it just rolls down to us to have to cut back on, on citizens.
Okay. And so between now and 2025, what's the plan? Next summer, right? Like, this could be a real issue.
I think we're going to look at if there's any infrastructure upgrades we can do in, in the meantime, we'll, we'll look at that. Of course, we want to maintain our relationship with San Marcos. And, and, you know, matching their irrigation schedule, doing some of these cutbacks is, is going to help maintain that. You know, they're, they're looking out for us as well. They know that things haven't changed for us. And, and I don't know, is there anything else you all want to?
I'll just add a couple of things to it. I mean, I think we fared better this year than we did last year, and I think that's some of the improvement. And I think that's some of the improvements in the management of the system by the Public Works team. I think they've done a good job of trying to get every gallon of water we could out of the system for, for the community. So we've done better, but the, the drought and the, the depth of the drought and that extreme has been, has affected not only us, but the whole region. I think it's hard for us to say, if we had a normal year next year, I think we're, we're probably fine. But if we have 10 to 15% of the rainfall for the next, you know, year or two years, it's going to be, continue to be an issue. And I think that's going to be an issue for everybody in the region of managing the water. Because these aquifers, they have to recharge, they have to have more water. Typically, you get that in the fall or the spring. If that does not occur, then we'll, we'll continue to have the restrictions. So I think the 25 timeframe is, is where we hope to have, you know, improvement by getting the additional water supply. That's what we think is the ultimate solution to it. But hopefully, we'll get a little bit of relief from the weather, but it's, it's hard to predict that.
Thank you.
I don't know, Tim, if you have other comments or?
I really just wanted to speak to the efforts that we're putting forth with the, there is a water model update that's, that's pending release, just with some few executed changes that need to occur. But in addition to that, there was an additional scope that Pol Works and Engineering has developed just in the system specifically that we've said, hey, we want these things looked at, we want it evaluated, we want a solution to the problems that we know that exist. And so that, that is something that they're actively working on to try, try to find a solution. To say that's going to be done in the next year, I don't think anybody can promise that. But we are actively looking for solutions to the problems that we're aware of.
All right, so I apologize for being late, I was working. But have we, if we are going to consider going up a stage or, you know, tightening the water restrictions? I don't know if going every other week for irrigation systems will be, make any difference. Because as I saw on Sunday, I see businesses watering completely out of the schedule. And there is water pouring down drains sadly, and I sent Brian a picture. So I would like to look into the possibility of shutting down completely irrigation systems for businesses first. Because if we say every other week, I mean, obviously, right now, they're not, they're not following that at all. And so now we're gonna be punishing responsible homeowners who have their irrigation systems under a schedule, most of them. Or we just like shut down completely irrigation system and everybody does hand watering, which is the only one that we can really, I feel like, you know, people have to do, you know, control. Like, you remember or you don't remember? So I don't know if that's a possibility. And then the next one, I don't know if we have any current development that is installing any landscaping that we can pause and demand for them to do something that is friendly with water conservation.
I was hoping you would jump in on that one. So, no, I thi- I think the first thing is, I, I think you're right. We do see businesses that are watering when they shouldn't be watering. We've been trying to step up that enforcement. I think the schedule that we've put together is going to be easier to enforce because there'll be weeks where it's not allowed at all. It's very easy to see this is not authorized and you can't do it. And we're gonna be stepping up enforcement when we see those things. We, we want to work with people if it's been an honest mistake, but if they're repeat offenders, we will potentially consider citing them and finding them for unauthorized use of the water. But our calculations show that we think we can get about a 30% reduction in water usage by going to this alternative irrigation system. We'll see, you know, as we go through the next month, hopefully, we'll get some cooler temperatures, maybe some rainfall. And that will help us too, but we're looking for about a 30% decline in water usage. So that, we think that's significant, it's a first step. If we, if we don't achieve that, then we can come back and have an additional conversation with you about that. And I think we can certainly reach out, the other, the second part of your question is we can certainly reach out to some of the larger developments and see what other types of landscaping is possible and could we do something different? I think the challenge has been when new developments come in, if we've required them to put in sod and trees and all those things, then they have to water it several times a day or several times a week to keep it alive. And, and we're requiring that, so we're gonna stop that, that'll help us too.
So who is going to be monitoring that the businesses are complying?
We've got an enforcement team and?
Right, we've got, the Public Works team does monitoring every morning and I think in the afternoons. We've got our building inspectors looking at watering. And we might have to enlist the police department to help as well. That would be our, our last effort. But for businesses that are noncompliant, they will be receiving citations.
I almost would like to double the citations for the businesses that are not compliant. It is sad to see water just running down drains. And I'm like, I took pictures in front of the business owner and I'm like, I'm gonna turn this in. Because I, I don't know what else can we be doing?
In regards to the water conservation presentation that we received last meeting, is there a timeline on which we'll be followed up with on that?
Oh, oh, the efforts that Kathy Raker presented? I, I think we're, yeah, in a month or so, gonna bring back some?
Is there any chance that can come back sooner? At least, I know there were five options that we all approved to move forward with. So I don't expect all five to have actionable plans at the same time. But potentially for this next meeting, i- is there, if one or two of them are options, at least we can start the cycle of, of change?
I think that's a good point. We, we can see what's ready to go forward on the 5th. I think we were looking to bring them together all at once. But we can look and see what's ready for this next meeting and what might be ready for the 19th. We can certainly do that.
And another question. Do, do we have any reason believe?
Do we have any reason believe that the fines actually change the behaviors of overusing water?
Well, if they don't change the behavior in, for, in the building community, we have the option to issue a stop work and withhold future permits, and that will definitely get their attention.
It's up to $2,000 a day, so I, I think it definitely can get their attention over time. It certainly will add up.
And is that something we're doing every day?
If we have an offender, yes, that's ignoring the rules, yes.
And do we have the bandwidth? Do we have enough people to be monitor? And I know the monitoring is happening every morning, but do we have enough people to take action as a result of what we're finding with the monitoring?
I believe so.
I think the answer is yes, we, we believe we have the staff to do that. It's, it's difficult sometimes because you, you go out, depends on when you go out and where you go out, what you see. And so it's, you can only cite someone for what you actually see and, or what you observe. Or if there's a, you know, an evidence of a video or something like that, that you get. So I think this schedule will also help us because again, anytime you go out on one of these weeks, it's not allowed, period. And so it's, it simplifies it quite a bit, we think.
And two more. What can we do with HOAs? Because I mean, I've seen, I live in Plum Creek, as, as you know, and I see it every day. What?
I have turned them in a couple of times.
So what can the city do?
Well, I, I think one of the things that we're looking at doing is our education plan and the, and the information that we'll send out. One of the things we want to do is contact all of the builders, all the commercial developments that we know of on our list, as well as the HOAs, and let them know about the new restrictions. And, and then try to work with them to make sure they're educated. Sometimes they want to comply, they may not know that a certain zone is on or somebody else in their system is doing something. So trying to get that word out and educate them about the new process is really important.
And lastly, something that was mentioned before, Amber, is it, did I hear correctly that the east side has easier access to water than the west side?
Flat Harbor.
Okay, that's new.
Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. So what she was trying to explain is GBRA, which is our surface water, comes in on that east side. So the issue that she was talking about with our system is moving that water from the west side, from the east side to the west side. And that's an infrastructure issue that we have talked with engineering, as well as the firms for the, for the water model that we're looking into. Some of those problems that we've had in the past with infrastructure and how we can move things, what we can do in our capacities and our function capability, those are finally moving to the forefront now where they've really been looked at. And we said, okay, we have this problem, this problem, this problem, this problem, this problem. We, we've talked about this in the past, but we need answers now. And that's what they're doing currently as we speak. So that process is underway, which me and Tim and Warren and all of us, Chris, are really happy about that because we feel like we're moving in a good direction.
Thanks, Harper. Actually, I have one more question. Going back to that water conservation presentation, is there in any way to forecast what the amount of water we could be saving based on each of the five options that were approved? So we could like prioritize what could be the, the biggest, create the biggest lift? And we can focus on those things first?
We, we can take a look at, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head on that.
Yeah, I don't expect it now, but I'm just?
Yeah, so we, we can, we can give you some of that. Again, I, I think from our standpoint, irrigation, outdoor irrigation is the number one user of the water, is what we're seeing.
I had a question, sorry. Are we going to do or consider the irrigation schedule only for the month of September? Or is this to complete the rest of the year on this irrigation schedule?
I would, yeah, I would recommend that we continue to watch San Marcos, continue to watch our usage. And we're just gonna make it day by day calls. Of course, we're gonna want to lift restrictions as, as soon as possible. As long as San Marcos is currently in this every other week watering schedule, I would expect the city of Kyle to be in this every other week watering schedule.
And then I was thinking, in one week, you have given everybody an opportunity, based on their addresses, to adapt to the new schedule. So could we just have one week of education? I don't think we have to be educating the second week of the month, the third week of the month. Just, it would save everybody time and be more efficient if we just did, the first week is your education week.
Like a grace week.
Like your grace period. In second week, I don't want to hear, we're going back out, this guy, we're talking to them again. Third week, we're still doing it. It's, it's, it's more difficult to control and to manage like that. So if we do this and it's going to be effective, it should be a one week everyone's had their chance to adapt and learn. Second week, you know, you're trained, take the, take the, take the training wheels off.
Our informal approach has been to warn two, at least two times.
That's too many.
Hang door hangers.
That's two is like, that's too many times.
I would say probably, yeah, I agree with council members, when you got one warning, then you're fine.
Yeah, that's, we have to have enforcement, otherwise we keep breaking the rules. And that's code and that's other, that's using the sprinklers, running the water.
Plus use of staff.
And use of staff, right, so we're just paying for it.
I would agree on being more heavy handed. I mean, it's no secret that there's no rain coming. Like, I don't think that we, we're way beyond education. If you need education right now, I'd like?
We've been in drought.
Yeah, then we got bigger problems.
So, so what are, what are we wanting to go with? We're going to go with the options that are listed? So you would need to decide what we want to do on this. Of course, referencing the presentation, you're giving us three options, correct?
No, sir, that, this is the only option that staff is recommending to be effective September 1st.
Okay, so would that be? I guess what I'm trying to do is figure out, we need to make a motion.
Well, I would just ask if you have a modification to this recommendation that you can?
I don't really want to establish the precedent of, of, other than just, because this is really under the purview of the city manager and the Public Works Director. So this is really more of a transparency thing to let us all know.
That's kind of where I wanted to go, it's, what is it that, you mean, we're getting feedback, we're giving the feedback. And a lot of us are really very concerned and, and want stricter enforcement. Especially with some developments.
Even that is, because I think about our, our officers who, when we try to, you know, they, officer discretion is really important. You know, because we're not necessarily looking at the case by case basis. So for us to try to set a hard rule, but I think you've got the feedback that, you know, if we're gonna go through all of this and everybody's gonna have to, you know, suffer equally, then we want to make sure that, that we're getting the enforcement and not being too lenient. And I do, I, I actually do agree, I think if it's a situation where it's just real clear, I don't know why we have to give a second written warning, you know, so. And it, and I do think that also you will achieve a lot of reduction in use because of the way you've set it up. The first and third week of September, there's no irrigation citywide. So if there's a sprinkler on, it's in violation.
Right.
And so that makes it easier as opposed to, wait, is it Monday or is it Wednesday? Is that odd or is that even? It's just pretty, pretty clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's where the education starts, with saying to really, really get to the residents, okay, we're getting very, very serious with this. And we can go ahead and get the public information out there. Even if we have to do a video to show this is what we need to do to conserve, or this is what you need to do with watering. And you can give specific different diagrams of the days, this is where we're at. And then you can hit the businesses as well. And if there's like, educate them to say, hey, look, if you see any watering late at night or something like that, here's a number you can call to be able to help on that end. We can start with that, basic across the board. Start getting the residents to understand that we are, we are all doing our part, you know, and we want to be able to conserve as much water. Yes, we are in hurricane season, but I don't see anything coming our way. And we got probably, what, four more weeks of it, and then that's it. And we're gonna start hitting the winter. So it's, we're in critical stages in the next month. So, so to answer the question, how do we get out of this? Yes, let's all pray for rain, obviously. But at the same time, I think if we start with educating the public at ground level and building it up and do exactly what Councilmember Parsley and Heiser are saying, let's get a little bit more stringent on, on, on some of the enforcement.
One quick suggestion, which, because, I mean, I'm a visual person. I would like for the city to put a calendar where you light up watering week, irrigation week, and then the next one. That way, people know, you know, okay, this is the week where we can all use irrigation and this one we cannot.
You got it.
True.
You had mentioned possibly utilizing the police department for issuing the fines. And would, is there any chance, just so the police department can not be stretched too thin, that we could utilize like citizens on patrol or something along those lines?
Yeah, I, I, I think what we mean by the police department is if they see a violation, they call into the staff, code enforcement team, the Public Works team, and we go out and look at that. But I can't see quite behind me, I'm not sure what's happening back there. But that we would have those folks, they, the police department's obviously busy responding to all kinds of calls, but they would get it to the right people, so we'd take care of it. But certainly, if they have other people that are assisting them, we can use them as well.
Okay, and the last thing, and then I'm gonna let her talk finally. In terms of how we're messaging this, can you tell us a little bit about, you know, how we plan to do that? Are we gonna use that, can we use the Kyle app? Can we use mass texting? Just to get a better sense of?
Rachel's been working on a plan for a week or two.
Rachel's got a solid plan. We are, are also, we made some new signs, they're black with yellow lettering that talk, talk about our current drought status and then to visit the website. And we'll be putting those in strategic areas around the community.
So our current plan right now is physical signage in as many areas as we can get it because it's always going to be the best way to reach people. Of course, a social media campaign on a weekly basis at least, kind of reminding people what the drought restrictions are and all of that. Press release to go out to all media after it's approved. Then also emails to all HOAs. And then I'll be sending that language over to Amber and her department so they can reach out to the building community with the same kind of language. Sorry. And then emails to, we also have an apartment list now, thanks to Kayla. So we'll be emailing that also to them so that they are aware that as a commercial property, you're also beholden to these same sorts of restrictions. Spanish translation to, for our Spanish, for our social media and e-newsletter posts. We cannot do mass texts though, simply because of the way our Everbridge system works. You can lose access if it's not an emergency situation. You can lose access if it's not an emergency situation that you send out text for. So if it doesn't risk, um, life or anything like that, we could lose access to that system, which is very important. So we wouldn't be able to use Everbridge, but we could use pretty much all of our other resources for that. Um, we could even send out a push notification through our City Kyle app. But, um, unfortunately, text messages wouldn't be able to be used for this certain situation.
All right, hopefully this is really the last thing. But, um, when I first got elected in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, we had a council member that brought to us a smart city device called the Honeywell. And what it did is it, it allowed you to see your water use and it allowed the city to monitor the, the water use as well. I don't know if that's something that the city is looking to implement. Um, at one point we were, we were really interested in it and it's kind of fallen off the radar. But I think for future long-term use, um, it, it might be a good idea to get something of the sort. If there's some kind of leak or if it'll pick it up and it'll notify. You can also, if you're, you know, a resident and it seems like your water usage is high, it'll send you a text. And so, um, I think looking into the future, you know, maybe for next year, that's something that we should look into again. Um, I would be really interested. And they gave us a presentation once before, so, um, I'm sure if we reached out, we could get that information again.
Yeah, we'll be glad to look at that. I, I, I'm familiar with those kinds of systems. I'm not sure, uh, what's been presented here in the past, but we'll go back and take a look at it. Good point.
So just to mention, if the target is really the irrigation and sprinkler systems and the messaging, and we really want to emphasize that, I'd also like to see that it is okay to use the water hose handheld, seven to ten, all, any day of the week. And, um.
With a positive shut off on the end.
With the shut off. Will there be enforcement there if someone is watering early in the morning by hand? I mean, I could see this becoming, um, really nitpicky, but obviously we want to maintain a seven to ten PM.
Yeah, it's certainly be, if we see someone violating any part of this, we're going to let them know about it and, uh, try to give them a little grace to make sure they have the right education, they understand it. But again, repeat offenders, uh, we'll be taking action on that.
So the messaging, I'd like to see that we do encourage water hose by hand for, for your foundations.
You got it.
And curbs. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. Sorry, we're a little bit late to start the P and Z. Uh, motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. All right, P and Z, y'all want to come up? Thank y'all for coming. We'll take, we'll, uh, we'll take a, we'll, we'll gavel in at six thirty-five. We'll take seven minutes.